I can go ahead.
I can go ahead.
Okay. Oh?
I gotta, I gotta kill mine. That didn't work.
I'm gonna get rid of this.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. I want a call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, August 24th, 2020. We opened the meeting at 6:00 in executive session pursuant to MGL C-30A, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss respect to collective bargaining for Harwich Employees Association and the Highway Maintenance Employees Association. If an open session would have had a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, and the chair so declared it, there was just further discussions of where we stood on that and how we would move forward. We also pursuant to MGL C-30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 2, to conduct strategy sessions for contract negotiations for non-union personnel interim town administrator, and we continued our discussions of the contract that will be offered to the interim town administrator. So let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we will be had Joe with the weekly briefing COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would turn it over to our Health Director, Megan Eldridge, for the latest update. I know she has some great news to pass along.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Megan.
Hi.
Hi, I'm hearing myself.
Uh-oh.
We only hear you once.
Okay, I hear myself. I'll try to ignore that. Great news, we currently have zero active COVID cases in Harwich. No new cases in about 10 days now. So all of the cases we were following have recovered. We have our total of 141 is still the same, so that is incredible, incredible news. We're doing really well with that. Keep up the good work, everyone. We have a 0.89 positivity rate for testing, so we've got a total of 3,400 people in Harwich that have been tested so far, and our positivity rate is significantly low and unchanged. One other update for you is that last week, the Board of Health voted unanimously to amend the emergency order requiring face coverings, and this amendment includes requiring face coverings to be worn during town meeting, not just during the meeting itself, but as you're walking in and walking out and getting to your seats for town meetings. So that's an important public health move that hopefully will make people feel comfortable going and attending town meeting next month.
Right. That it?
That's, that's it, unless you want to know something else.
Well, it's all good news, and that's a hard, you know, that we hardly ever have that. So thanks so much. That's, you guys have done a fantastic job, obviously, and, you know, it appears that the people of the town are really observing the guidelines. So, you know, keep our fingers crossed we can keep that attitude going through the rest of the summer month here, so.
I did include in your packet, there was a question about Little League, I forgot about until just now. Someone had asked why there isn't Little League in town, and the answer is because Little League is a private organization that hasn't requested to operate in town. We, we have specific rules within Phase 3 of sports for both kids as well as adults, and baseball is allowed right now with specific guidelines, and you can even have spectators if you want. And I talked with Eric Beebe, the Rec Director, and he said that it wouldn't be something he would prohibit in any way, it's just that the Little League, the league itself has not requested to use our fields. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And do you have a?
Yeah, no, we had received a letter. I, from a, I'm sure he's a parent, I had assumed he was involved with the Little League Association in questioning what the procedure was. He seemed, seemed to indicate in his letter that they need approval from the Monomoye School District, and I talked to Superintendent Scott, and he says, no, they don't have anything to do with the, the Little League program, and it's, you know, not in their jurisdiction. The interesting thing that Scott pointed out is that with their attempts to get elementary school children back into the schools as classes, what they're planning on doing is keeping each class together as a single unit, so if something happens to one of the children in that class, it only will affect potentially that class. His concern with any sort of extracurricular group activity that the children might be involved in that sort of take them into a group that is much more expansive than just their class, if something happens, then he's faced with potentially having to close the entire school because there'd be children in each class that would have been affected. So, but, you know, that being said, he said, it's still, you know, not our decision to make because they don't play on their, on any of the school district fields, and it's not one of their programs.
Okay. Is that, that it, Megan?
That's it, unless you have other questions for me.
I do have one question. I was asked by a couple of residents of the town who had read about the Nantucket. I guess the Board of Health voted in Nantucket to stop the sale of alcohol after 11:00 at night in Nantucket, and asked if we, I, they asked me if I'd ask if we had considered such a, such a move.
They, that is correct, the Nantucket Board of Health, I'm not sure if they put an emergency order together or how they did it, but they did stop the sale of alcohol at restaurants after 10:00 PM, mostly because they stopped offering food at that point, and they just turned into a bar. So the, our Board of Health has not requested or talked about that. Before the governor's order specifically required food to be ordered at the time of a, a bar bill starting, I had thought about doing something similar, approaching that with the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen, but then that very week, the governor included in his safety standards, the requirement that food must be ordered when you order a drink. So that kind of stops that bar scene a little bit, and I was going to see how that went before we went to the Board of Health to do anything more strict.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just had a couple of folks ask me about that, so, anyway. Well, thank you. I guess next up, our business community, Cindy Williams? Unless Joe?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I thought I'd share some exciting news. I mentioned last week, I had some exciting news, and we did our, the chamber held our annual meeting virtually last week, installed the new slate of officers, and I shared that as well as the awards that we gave to our member businesses or organizations. So our new president will be Rich Kristoff of 400 East. The new Vice President is Julie Dakota of KMD Plumbing. Suzanne Berry is a second Vice President and Clerk, and Peggy Knight from William Ravus is the new Treasurer. We also every year give out awards to member businesses. I'm not going to go through the criteria because I know you guys have a full agenda, but I did want to share the award winners. For Business of the Year, it went to Cape Cod Five. Our Best Community Improvement Award, we were excited to award to the, and I'm sorry to see that our new Fire Chief is not on, but he was on our virtual meeting. The new East Harwich Station Two Fire Station was given the Best Community Improvement Award. Our Emerging Business went to Jay and Heather from Murphy's General Store. In their first year, they went through a tornado and COVID-19 and are having a record summer, so that was quite fitting. The Continuing Legacy is the Next Generation Award, and that was given to Dave's Garage. And finally, the Jimmy Marsaline Community Service Award. This is the third year we're giving this out in, in Jimmy's name, and that went to Team Guthrie Maybio from Robert Paul Properties, who are extremely giving and part of a very strong philanthropic community. So we just want to express how proud we are of all the members and the community, but also just continue to stress to please remind everyone to shop and support the local businesses, especially as we go forward into the fall. We have some new things hopefully we'll be able to put together for bringing more people into the community during the fall and winter months. So that's it from the business community tonight.
That's great. Thanks very much, Cindy. Appreciate it. Congratulate, congratulations to all those businesses and individuals that got the new appointments, so. We move to public comments and announcements, and I just want to say, I forgot at the opening to mention that the reason our chairman Larry is not with us tonight is he did have to have a, a medical procedure and is home from the hospital and resting comfortably, so he's on his, on his way to repair. So that's why he isn't with us tonight. I don't know whether we have any other announcements or?
The obvious announcement is that Don Howell's in the same condition.
Oh, well, right, that's right, Don. Yeah, well, there you go, two mistakes in a row for me. Don also has recently had some surgery and was here for our executive session, but it was obvious he was in a lot of pain and, and had to head home, so. And I guess, Joe, do I need here to see with Jamie if there's any public comment?
So before we ask, I would just, I know that there may be folks that are on the line to talk about their petitioned articles. We'll cover that later in the meeting.
Okay.
Are you aware of anyone else?
No, I checked out about four today. I haven't seen them since.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All righty, well, we'll move on to the non-resident taxpayers video, and Joe, I guess you guys set that up for us, Jamie?
Yep. Are you ready?
Yep.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carolyn Carey. I'm sure I know a lot of you, but for those of you I don't, I run the Community Center and am in charge of the Cultural Center and the Seaside Marketplace. And I'm so grateful to Channel 18, who's going to let us come in here and give you just a brief overview of what we do, but I will tell you a few times that if you need to know any additional information, don't hesitate to jump on the town website and check us out under any of those titles, the Community Center, the Cultural Center, or the Seaside Marketplace. We have listings under all of them that will give you information on everything that we do. Things have changed just a little bit, probably since the last time we talked. I have my mask in front of me, but I'm in a room all by myself, so I get to talk to you. But this is what you'll see if you come to any of our buildings, everyone is wearing masks. That's really important, even at the outside venues at the Seaside Marketplace. So let me tell you that our Seaside Marketplace is up and running down at Sacquetucket Harbor. You don't want to miss that. We have several vendors who are coming in in August. Look for the High Tide Designs, a lot of Cape Cod, Harwich, Chatham, T-shirts, sweatshirts have great things, Seabreeze Treasures. Anyway, our whole schedule is listed on our website if you're interested in any of the marketplace. It's such a wonderful place to go visit. It's outside, please wear your mask, but just take in that venue, enjoy the harbor, and check out the Seaside Marketplace. It is open and will be open all of August and into September, so don't miss that. Additionally, if you're interested in renting a space at the Cultural Center, some of you may or may not know, we do have some smaller spaces left available for renting, and you can find that information again on the town webpage if you go to the Cultural Center. There's a whole packet on studio rental information that you can get. That's at the Cultural Center at 204 Sisson Road. Quickly, I wanted to let you know that if you are in the market or looking for the town reports, we do have them here. Our building is open, so you can come in and pick those up. I know some others are by appointment only. We're currently open to the public and are happy to have you in. We're open until 4:00 right now. Hours may change, and we'll update on Channel 18. Next, let's tell you about the Community Center. We do have some groups and organizations coming back. We are meeting with smaller groups, and we're trying to put people in larger rooms. Everyone must wear a mask. What's really important is that we can still do passport appointments, but people should know that is by appointment and that the passport agency themselves are running very, very far behind. So you want to, I know people aren't thinking about traveling, but if you're going to be traveling later or your passport's about to expire, you do have some time, just give us a call, we'll help you through that process as well, so you can get your passports here. If you're looking for any of the clubs and organizations, give us a call. Some have decided to come back and some have not, so we will keep you informed about that. Our activity rooms can hold up to 10 people. The multipurpose room is between 25 and 30 people, and the gym is anywhere from 35 to 50 people, depending on what we're doing and how it's set up, and all that information can be found on our website. I know I keep saying that. And the most important question that all of you are asking is, when are we going to open the weight room? We are diligently working on it. As you know, there are new rules and guidelines, and because ours isn't an actual gym, it's more of a room, we have to have enough distance between people. People will still need to wear their masks. If you don't wear masks, you have to be 14 feet apart, which would limit the amount of people much greater than what we have. We're currently looking at doing a sign-up system, so people will be able to sign up for the hour that they want. We're going to have hour and a half block, six people at a time, and that information will be coming to anyone who's been a member of the weight room. We're going to do a robo-call out just as soon as we get the go-ahead to open up. So we've been trying to make it as user-friendly as possible and invite everyone in, and I know I'm talking a mile a minute, but three things I want you to remember. We're happy you're here, we hope we can help you, and if you need any more information, don't hesitate to give us a call, or stop by the Community Center, or check out our webpage. I'm Carolyn Carey, and I thank you for listening and look forward to seeing you again. Stay well.
Hi, my name is Eric Beebe. I'm the Harwich Recreation and Youth Director and Beaches, and I'm here to give you a little report on our non-resident taxpayer meeting for beaches and everything recreation-related. So I'm going to kind of go down my, my list here. For our beaches this year, despite the current circumstances, as everybody knows, it's been an interesting summer. We are fully functional at the beaches. We have a full complement of staff. We have 32 lifeguards, seven gate attendants, three beach supervisors, and two parking enforcement officers. And we have a high rate of return this year for staff, which is great. We have a very veteran staff, a lot of kids that were in college that lifeguard for us had internships that were canceled, and unfortunately for them, but fortunately for us, we have them back. We also have 10 new employees this year. They're called COVID-compliance personnel. They are monitoring all our town beaches for following all the state guidelines as far as social distancing, masks, ball-playing, anything that's allowed or not allowed at the town beaches. And the response so far has been really good. We've had good interactions between staff and patrons, no issues at all, and we thank the public for that. Our parking, the differences this year at the beaches, our parking restrictions currently in place are Pleasant Road Beach and Earl Road Beach. Those two, two lots are blocked off. There's limited parking due to the amount of space on the beach and the amount of parking spaces applicable to them. So we're not selling daylight passes at those beaches this year, so that's, that's a big difference. The only other parking restriction is Red River Beach this year. We have plovers down there. They've been down there longer than usual. I know there's a lot of questions about that. We've had the east end of the parking lot blocked off for quite a while now, and we're hoping that soon the plovers will hatch and move on, and we'll be able to open that up for more parking. Other changes were for our staff. We did extensive training for our staff, including lifeguards, everybody that's going to be at the beach. Social distancing for the staff, sanitizing gloves. They're sanitizing all equipment before, during, and after shifts, so they're doing a great job with that so far. We're trying to keep everyone healthy on the beaches in this kind of different time that we're in. The beach, beaches have been successful so far. We've seen a couple of emergency situations, which our staff have responded to very well, especially despite the, the new guidelines that they have to follow as far as emergency situations. So everything's been going well. Daily pass sales are doing well at the beaches. We're about 25% down due to Pleasant Road and Earl Road being closed to daily pass sales, which was to be expected, but beach sticker sales are solid, which are bringing in good revenue for the town, which is good to hear. We also have our mobile food vendors, fully functional at the beaches, and that includes mobile mixers at Red River Beach and Bank Street Beach. They have a full array of lobster rolls and hot dogs and grilled cheese and whatever you want to eat. We also have our ice cream trucks going beach to beach. They're following all guidelines. They've been in contact with the Health Department, and you can feel safe eating there. As far as summer programming this year, unfortunately, we had to cancel all our summer programming due to the guidelines that were put in place by the state and town officials, and we canceled our summer camp, our tennis lessons, and our swim lessons. We can't wait to get those back again. We were able to reinstate our summer adult programs, including pickleball, with very restricted guidelines, what, what they can do, how many people can be there at a time. We're also renting out our fields and parks to groups and organizations that want to use them, which is another revenue source for the town, which is good for us. We're, we're hoping to get back to programming as soon as possible. We're already trying to plan for the fall. A lot depends on what the schools do, and we're going to follow that up, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to have the kids in here again. Last things I kind of wanted to hit on were projects that we're doing with the Rec Department. Recently, and ongoing projects, we're working on our final plans and specifications for the Brooks Park Improvement Project, Phase 5, which includes a whole new LED, LED lighting system for Brooks Park. So we should have that, beginning work on that in the fall of this year. We also have put together specs for a new pre-cast concrete restroom at Sand Pond Beach, which we're looking forward to and we hope to have completed in the fall. We actually completed our Community Center Fields Fit Station project, so we have new fit stations out there. They've been getting a lot of use, which is great because it's open air. People could spread out and kind of get some exercise in, so we encourage you to come down to the Community Center and get out back, and they're, they're nice pull-ups, sit-ups, very simple, but it's good for people. We're also putting together specifications, and we already have funding for a new scoreboard at White House Field, which we hope to have in before the 2021 season of the Mariners and the Harwich High School, or Monomoye High School baseball team. And we also had funding in place for 11 new lifeguard stands in town. We just had our first one constructed and put in by the Harwich Highway Department at Earl Road Beach. 10 more are coming. Future projects, we're excited. We have two projects that were just approved by the Community Preservation Committee, and we're bringing them to the annual town meeting in September. One of them is a whole new lighting system at White House Field, all LED lighting, less ambient light, many savings for the town as far as electric bills. We're also, we requested funding, and we're approved by CPC for new fencing for Brooks Park Baseball Field. So we're excited to have that going in as well, but hopefully we get the votes, September Town Meeting for those two projects. And that's, that's what's going on with the Rec. It's been an interesting season adjusting to what everybody's going through. We're trying to do our best to provide all the resources we can for the public to get to the beaches and, and have some recreational time and relax and have fun, and hopefully we'll be back to normal in the fall, and if not, we'll do our best to adapt and do what we can going forward. And thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Charlene Greenhouse, and I am your town planner. We've been asked to do a little briefing for you in, in exchange for meeting in person due to COVID, so a couple of things that we've been working on in the Planning Department and also with the Planning Board. We recently finished a municipal preparedness plan, an MVP. We received a grant from the state to complete a vulnerability assessment and develop action-oriented resiliency plans. We held a workshop, which was, was wonderful back in January with a number of different stakeholders who, from different town agencies, but also a number of different businesses in town. Due to COVID, however, we were unable to do a public listening session, which was one of the requirements, but instead, the Cape Cod Commission, who we contracted with, prepared a really excellent video, which is available on the town website if you do wish to take a look at it. It's only about 15 minutes long, and it really has a lot of valuable and really creative information. The plan was approved by the state, and now the town is eligible for funding to assist with implementation. We've also been working on the West Harwich District of Critical Planning Concern. This was a nomination that was approved by the county commissioners back in December of 19. Again, due to COVID, things have been a little slower than we had hoped, but we are moving along. We have been working with Cape Cod Commission staff to draft the required implementation regulations. We have had a couple iterations go before the Planning Board for discussion to get some input. We do hope to have this on the September Town Meeting warrant. We actually do next week, although this will be airing after that, doing a public session on Channel 18 and through Go To My Meeting, which will also be rebroadcasted, so you'll be able to see it either on YouTube or check out the Channel 18 station, and, and you can take a look at it. We also have a really great Planning Department webpage where there are a number of different links to a number of different documents related to the West Harwich District of Critical Planning Concern. Another document that we have been working on is a revision to the multifamily dwelling bylaws. Right now, the existing bylaw is really quite onerous and overly restrictive. We are hoping to make it, it would still be a special permit process, but we're trying to cull it down and, and make it easier to follow within the zoning bylaw. Right now, it's kind of scattered all over the place. We have had several drafts, which are, have been reviewed by the Planning Board, and at last night's meeting, which was July 28th, the Planning Board did vote to refer the proposed zoning articles to the Board of Selectmen for their referral back to the Planning Board so the public hearing process can start. And hopefully, that also will be on the September Town Meeting. I know they're trying to kind of cull that down to have that not be so onerous, but we are hoping we can get this on there because we definitely have a need for housing, you know, workforce housing here in the Cape and, and in particular here in Harwich. There's a great need for that type of housing. And also, last but not least, and I think you've heard this before, but I am retiring in November. I know you heard that I was retiring in September, but frankly, due to the COVID situation and having been a public servant for 33 years, I felt it was not appropriate for me to be retiring at that time. I knew that getting a new planner in here was going to be very difficult, if not impossible, so I decided to stay on through November. I will definitely help the town to, you know, work with whoever that new person is that they eventually hire and try to make it as smooth a transition as I possibly can. So with that, thank you for allowing me to be your town planner over the last, I think it's three years now. I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it, and I've enjoyed public service for the last 33 years. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Sowsky, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Conservation Department for the town of Harwich, what we do and what we've really been doing this year. So first, the Conservation Department and the Conservation Commission is responsible for upholding the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Harwich Wetlands Protection Bylaw. What this entails is working with waterfront property owners to ensure that the projects they wish they do on their property, be it building a new house, removing vegetation, really any alteration within the 100-foot buffer of a wetland or 200 feet of a river, meets the state and local regulations. Our department consists of two staff members, myself as a conservation administrator and a assistant conservation agent. In addition to upholding federal, state, and local laws, our department and the commission, which consists of seven volunteer members, is also responsible for taking care of, of over 1,000 acres of conservation land. We do this with assistance from the Harwich Department of Public Works, the Conservation Trust, and many volunteers. If you would like to volunteer with us, please contact me. In the past year, the Conservation Department and Commission has put an emphasis on trying to better manage our conservation lands. The Commission is currently evaluating alternatives on how to manage the old cranberry bogs in the Bellsnack Conservation Area now that there is no longer lease there. Options range from re-leasing, re-leasing the bogs to grow cranberries or other agricultural products, all the way to full naturalization. There will be a public meeting about this at the end of September or early October, and we urge the public to participate. You can contact our office for details. You can go on the town website and find our contact information there, both phone number and email. Our department is also in charge of monitoring state-listed shorebirds, like piping plovers, on our town beaches. When I say state-listed, that doesn't just mean endangered, it means threatened, species of special concern, et cetera. Many of you may have noticed the concrete barricades blocking off a section of parking at Red River Beach and symbolic fencing consisting of stakes and twine at both Red River and Bank Street Beach. By law, if the town wishes to clean their beaches or to keep beaches open to the public where state-listed shorebirds are, we're required to fence off sections. This year, more of the birds nested than usually do on our town beaches. Once the chicks fly, we can remove those barricades. However, with more nests, we had more chicks this year over a prolonged period of time, which is why you may have noticed the barricades up for a longer period. Currently, all of our chicks have flown, and all the barricades and fencing have been removed. We appreciate the public's patience and understanding this summer. Lastly, and in closing, if anyone is interested in more, more about what the Conservation Department does, would like to volunteer, please email or call me. You can contact us via the website. Our email is there, as well as our phone number. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's John Rendon. I'm the harbor master for the town of Harwich, and I'd like to just give you a quick rundown of some of the department's activities and accomplishments over the past year. So with the staff, the four full-time staff that we have, and we augment with three seasonal positions, we provide, you know, our core mission is providing maritime assistance to mariners and vessels in distress. We enforce mass general laws relating to vessel operations. We maintain our waterways through dredging operations. We have a number of private town aids that we maintain, aids to navigation. We operate our marine pump-out facilities for boaters, and we manage a 202-slip marina that's very active during the summer. And we administer the slip mooring, offloading, permitting processes throughout our facilities. So from an operational perspective, so far this year, we've had 35 maritime assistance cases. What kind of cases? We have boat toes, groundings, boats needing to be dewatered, et cetera. So it's been, it's been a busy, busy season so far. We maintain patrol boats and pump-out boats at Sacquetucket Harbor, over on Round Cove, the Pleasant Bay side, and we also have a patrol boat always on Long Pond that we, that we patrol. So let's talk marine operations. So far, it's been a busy season. You know, obviously, we are in the COVID-19 pandemic circumstances, and yet, our marina operations have, have remained strong. We're full between our permitted boaters and our transient boaters. It has been a very active season. How has it impacted us? Well, you know, our harbor master office is open to the public, but with restrictions. We only allow one person in at a time, and of course, anybody who comes in has to have a face covering, as does our staff. From a boating perspective, we're currently operating under Phase Three of the state's COVID restrictions relating to boating operations. So what does that mean in general? All of our public boat ramps are open to the public for use, as long as there is parking available. No loitering at our ramps or landings, and parking areas are supposed to be happening. Social distancing is required anywhere at the marina, anywhere at the marina, anywhere at the public boat ramps, and if you can't social distance, then you have to have face coverings. Commercial fishing has continued throughout. It is a, it is a essential service, so, so that continues. Six-pack operations, charter boat operations, just allowed as part of Phase Three, so they are operating. And they have some added requirements relating to cleanliness and hygiene protocols that I've outlined, as has passenger boats. Our passenger boats, which are Coast Guard inspected vessels, are larger boats that take typically a large number of people. They are allowed at a 50% capacity to operate, and again, they have added hygiene and cleaning At the marina, the Snack Shack that is leased from the town, last year was their first season. They had a real good first year, exceeded revenue targets, and therefore, the town realized some additional lease revenue from that. But this year, just like all restaurants, they've been impacted. They're open, they're operating, and we'll see how, how the year shakes out. The Artisan Sheds, that again were a new addition to our, to our marina last year, a real good first season, but they have definitely been impacted, and so we've had a couple open and, and remain open, but nothing like we had last year. Our harbor revenues for end of fiscal year, which just, just ended, end of June, are strong. They remain strong. The department ended the fiscal year with approximately $1,361,000 in revenue generated from our harbors. Dredging happens every year, and, and this past year, this past season, we dredged Allen Harbor Channel, which pretty much is every year because we have chronic shoaling in that channel. The Barnstable County dredge removed 6,074 cubic yards of material, and we also dredged Witchmere Channel. And again, the Barnstable County did that work, and they removed 1,754 cubic yards. All of that material was put on our public beaches for nourishment. We added good sand to Grayneck, Earl Road, Wawatasi, Atlantic, and Ocean Avenue beaches, Pleasant Road Beach, and we actually trucked sand over to Red River. So good dredge season and some good nourishment for our public beaches. As was the case last year, we again received a state grant from the Mass Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, $36,000 to put towards our dredging costs, so that was a, a good thing. Some of the upcoming projects that the department has, our Round Cove Boat Ramp, we're trying to replace that ramp. We had the design and permitting of that project completed by GEI Consulting, contracted with GEI Consulting. We put it out to bid. The town received two competitive bids for that project. The low bid came in at $219,483. So moving forward, we require a town meeting approval for some supplemental funding in, in the amount of about $106,000 to complete that project. So whenever a town meeting happens, we'll see if that, if that gets approved. My hope is that we can start that project late fall or, or early spring upcoming. And then the other project that we have ongoing, Allen Harbor Jettie Rehabilitation Study is being done. Allen Harbor Jettie, the West Jettie, is porous, it's in poor shape, and one of the reasons we have to dredge Allen Harbor Channel every year. So we're trying to look at that and see what can be done to improve that situation. So again, we've contracted with GEI Consulting, and they're going to do a site investigation, prepare preliminary concept design to be briefed up the chain, and prepare regulatory submittals, and then hopefully come up with a final design that we can take and look to improve that jetty. So all in all, been a good season so far, very active, very busy waterways. I think people are anxious to get out on the water, so all is good, and if you have any other questions, you can contact me. Thank you.
Okay. All set? Okay. I obviously want to thank our department heads for their presentation, and if any of our non-resident taxpayers or anyone that's watched the video have other questions, please feel free to contact them through the website or, or their contact information that is on the website. Any other comments from my colleagues on the board here?
Mr. Chairman, just at this, that is the second of three installments. One more to go next week.
One more to go, okay. So next week, we'll have another series here, and hopefully, all of the non-resident taxpayers find it helpful in better understanding our town. We move on to new business minutes to approve, June 15, 2020.
I move that we approve the minutes for June 15, 2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
And I'm an aye.
Moving on to all business discussion, possible vote to name Joseph F. Powers interim town administrator for a 90-day period to expire, expire no later than November the 18th, 2020. Joe, I believe that your most recent appointment has expired, is that correct?
Last week.
Which is why we've come to this point. I, I do want to say that I, I know there's been some concern expressed by folks in the town relative to the limitations placed on us in the charter as to our ability to, to make this appointment, these appointments. I want to assure you that we have had extensive consultation with council, and council believes strongly that we do have this ability based on a number of different interpretations of both the situation that we find ourselves in, i.e. COVID, and the leeway the state has given us relative to how we govern, but also the interpretation of the, of the charter itself. And I do appreciate the concerns that people have expressed relative to this. We wish that we haven't had to do this so many times in a row, but we do need to do it at this point in time, and so we'll move ahead, and, you know, if I have a motion?
I move that we approve, vote to name Joseph, Joseph F. Powers interim town administrator for a 90-day period not to expire, or to expire no later than November 18th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous vote. Moving on to update on annual town meeting logistics. Joe, I'll, I'll turn that over to you unless you want me to read the town moderator's note into the, into the record. You, you tell me how you want to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's, that's one of several items that will come under this topic of town meeting logistics. You heard one of them already from our health director, that the Board of Health has mandated a face cover, or face covering order. In a moment, I'd ask our town engineer to walk you through the logistics to date. I know that Griffin has done a great job working with DPW, who's done a great job working with the school department. I know that the moderator has been kept abreast of all of this, so what I was hoping this evening is to have our town engineer talk about the actual logistics of the day itself, where we are right now, and then, as you've mentioned, there's a couple procedural items that I want to bring to the board's attention. So with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for our town engineer to weigh in.
That would be great. Griffin?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So I, I think you've, you've seen the, the plan in your packet. I can just walk you quickly through that. You know, based on information provided by Joe through a meeting that was held maybe a couple weeks ago as a walkthrough at, at the stadium, the idea was to provide approximately 500 seats in an arrangement of one and two seats, and provide, you know, six feet of spacing at a minimum around each one of these seats to allow people, you know, whether they have to wear masks or not, at least they can feel spaced out and, and feel somewhat comfortable having space around them. So what this is, is what the, the plan shows overlaid on the, on the field, an aerial of the field, is a series of rows of, you know, 24 and 23 seats in an arrangement of one, two, one, two, in, in that series for each one of these. And then each one of these rows of seats separated by, with two feet to give you a little bit of a walkway in front of you, and that's in addition to the six feet around you. So just trying to provide spacing, you know, there's, there's a, a lot of spacing on the field, you know, trying to provide spacing but not push people too far, too far back. We try, we developed four quadrants, which I believe was a request of the moderator. So there's a larger aisle of 12 feet, you'll see, sort of in a cross, that, that creates these, these four quadrants. We also created, one at the time was going to be a no-mask area. Now, I don't believe we will need that because of the ordinance that's going into place, so, so we could quite simply slide those seats up or provide, potentially provide some seats on the track that might be a little bit closer to where, you'll see where the moderator and town clerk are in the northern end zone, right beyond the end zone there. And then there's, behind that is a series of what's meant to show as tables and chairs of what would be the folks that typically sit up front, the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, finance director, finance committee, and I'm sure I might be missing one or two, and I apologize for that, but that's, that's what that is meant to show. We, we do know that, that power will be provided by the Snack Shack, which is in the lower left-hand corner of, of the page and the plan as you see it. So that, you know, where, where the moderator and town clerk are is, is a good location for, for that. I, I know Jamie has provided some comments as to, you know, speaker locations and, and video locations, and it seems like those things can be accommodated pretty easily in the way that the plan is, is laid out as it is now. But again, this is kind of just a, a conversation starter, so happy to take any comments or answer any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Griffin, for that presentation. I was finally able to get some facsimile of your diagram up on the screen right now, and what's cut off that you can't see is in that lower left-hand corner, the Snack Shack. We're in discussions with the town clerk's office, but that may be suitable for check-in, and running along that fence there, a little bit of a cattle chute, that's why we have the mask covering order in place, but it could facilitate people getting in very easily. If there's general public that aren't voters that wish to attend, we have them going down the other end and could access that other end that Griffin talked about where the seats could be available. I think most importantly, the moderator had asked for upwards of 400 seats, so you can see that using the alternating mechanism that Griffin's identified, we, we can accommodate close to 500 people. The other points I'd want to make reference to is when we did the walkthrough, and I'm not really sure when the photo was taken, but you can see the shadowing there, the intent, and the, this was the moderator himself sort of offering himself up, if you will. He and the town clerk will be most exposed to the sunlight. We're going to have tent and some covering for them, but that the voters will have the sun to their back so that they can focus on the town meeting itself. Given that where we expect the vernal equinox and sun to be, it may not be that difficult for everybody, but of course, we want a nice, cool, calm, sunny day and get through it quickly.
Oh, yeah.
And again, Griffin, I don't know, have you heard back from the moderator on some of your items? Because I know that the moderator did have your items because I know that the moderator did have some comments for Griffin on this?
I may have missed it, but I haven't heard, I don't believe I've seen anything directly.
I think I can pass something along tomorrow morning then. And then really, as we progress through the warrant and through this process, we're going to advertise this quite heavily, meaning letting everybody know what the logistics are, best place to park, best place to access, and some expectations for people. I do want to point out, as you saw in Griffin's memo, to me, that there's been some consternation, could this impact negatively on the field? And Superintendent Carpenter assures us that the use that we're proposing is something that the field can endure for the amount of time that we'll be there.
Okay, okay. Do we want to have any discussion around quorum at this point, Joe, or is that something?
No, that's, I was just waiting for a transition, Mr. Chairman, unless there were questions, but thank you for that. Excuse me. This evening in a moment, as we go through the latest articles, I have updates from council on some language and just general updates to go through as you progress through the articles. But in hearing from John Giorgio, he has confirmed that if we were to go with a reduced quorum, the board would have to agree that you want to have that discussion. The moderator has indicated that he's willing to have the discussion and support a reduced quorum if that's where the board's going. Both parties have to be in agreement. So, I did take the extra step of posting a notice that if the board is willing to discuss reduction of quorum, the public has to be given seven days' notice. So, I posted a notice this morning that next week you would take that matter up.
Okay.
Moderator Ford was unable to be here this evening to give his own thoughts on that, so he did provide an email that with your permission, Mr. Chairman, he asked it be read into the record. He makes a statement to tonight's hearing. I confirm with the moderator that the hearing itself is next week and he appreciated that comment and says that his comments stand in relative to next week's hearing.
Okay.
So, unless there's objection. He indicates that he's not able to participate this evening, but goes on to state that, sorry, before I go there, the reduction of quorum, I don't know if I've said it yet, but unlike the first special act that was created, does not impact upon our warrant. So, you can have as full of a warrant as you want, reduce quorum to make sure we have enough people there, and it will not affect the number of articles that we can talk about. And as you may recall, that was not only a concern of the moderator, but myself and several other people. So, that's no longer a restriction for us. The moderator writes, recognizing that setting the quorum is customarily the province of the voters, I was initially hesitant to approve of a reduction. However, I believe the board has taken positive steps by locating the annual meeting outdoors, designing the layout of the meeting to observe the social distancing requirements, working with the guidance of town hall staff, including the Board of Health regarding protocols to be followed during the meeting, including the requirement of masks, resulting in a safe environment in which to conduct the meeting. These steps were all taken in an effort to get as many voters to attend as possible, and I believe we will end up attracting in excess of the established quorum, which we know to be 150 voters, to the meeting. However, we fall, if we fall, if however, we fall short of the established quorum, notwithstanding the efforts to create a safe and attractive meeting place, I understand the need to be able to conduct the town meeting in order to authorize the town to continue to function during the state of emergency. Accordingly, I would support a quorum reduction if the board so votes. Please enter this email into the record at tonight's hearings as my comments as moderator are as required by section 7A of chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020. Thank you. Michael D. Ford, town moderator. And so, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the board would have to assent to having the discussion next week. Obviously, the moderator has made his feelings known and that if the board were going to have this discussion next week, the public is notified that there's a hearing would take place. It's been published in accordance with the Acts of chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020 and that the next step would be for you all to discuss it in public next week.
Do you need just a general consensus from us this evening?
At this point, correct, that the board would be willing to enter into that discussion.
I know that I would. Michael, Ed?
Yep.
Yes.
So, then that'll be on the agenda next week and sometime after 6:30, you can get into that. And there'll be more information, but as you may already know, the board would then have the right to reduce quorum from anywhere from 149 people right down to 15 people.
Right.
So, that was the last logistical item I had before we got into the latest draft of the warrant under item C.
Yeah, let me just ask this, Joe, before you begin to fill us in on each of these questions and we decide whether or not to take a vote. I know that there are three people who have expressed a desire to speak on 43, 44, and also two on 43 and one on 44. Shall we do that after you, for example, on 43, you make the description of what it is and then let the folks speak at that point? Is that?
I think that would be probably the best way to do it and that, to let you know that, following up on the discussion last Tuesday, I directed staff to reach out and we've got at least two of the petitioners available to talk tonight about their articles.
Okay.
And I think the other one is a concerned citizen regarding an article.
Okay. So, you're going to lead us through these articles?
Correct, yep. And so, I'd also let the board know that you have an additional item that I passed out this evening. It's, you've seen similar versions, you know, the town meeting article certification process being what it is for any number of officials. This is a document that I've used over the years, most recently as town clerk, to then certify the votes of a town meeting. So, what you're looking at and what we'll make public is the list of the articles. I was updated over the weekend by the Finance Committee Chairman as to the actions taken by the finance relative to these articles. So, you'll have their information as to what their votes were or what their recommendations are. In addition to that, I want to alert everyone to the fact that there is a new article. It is a boilerplate item that was required relative to contract negotiations that were concluded last year. So, I'll, there's a renumbering that took place and I'll walk you through that. That article is Article 25, which I'll bring up for discussion tonight, and I believe the Finance Committee will take that up at their meeting on Thursday, the 27th. Hoping to get as many articles dispatched as we can tonight because the effort would be for the board to finalize the warrant, close the warrant, sign the warrant on the 31st, and then get that right over to Cape Cod Chronicle. That's really the latest we can get it to them, for them to meet all of our requirements for redistribution.
And I want to thank you there, Joe, because I know we had an earlier date and you guys worked with the Chronicle to give us a little leeway.
Yep, and really appreciate their patience and understanding. And they've been great partners throughout the whole thing. So, you can see on the agenda, I've identified the articles that you had not yet taken positions on. As I mentioned, if you look at item number 14, that's related to the new article that I mentioned. I will tell you that John Giorgio and his review of the articles Friday and over the weekend, he has some scrivener changes that I will make that I wouldn't be getting into this evening. They relate to articles you've already adopted. It's more housekeeping. So, I think what might be appropriate at this point, Mr. Chairman, is I don't know if the board is in a position, given your numbers, to get into the operating budget articles of five, six, and seven. You can see the numbers there. Those are hard, fast numbers at this point. You can see that the Finance Committee has indicated for all of those, except for the Cape Cod technical budget, that they, no recommendation pending further information. So, if you'd like, I can just identify some additional articles that you, the board might be disposed or might be inclined to dispose of this evening if that works.
Open for comment, Michael?
I think I would say we should do as many as we can, but why don't we start with the list at hand and ask questions as we go?
Okay.
If that's okay with Joe, if we dispatch these and then bring back other numbers?
Right, yeah.
So, with that, I'd move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant town officers and committees.
All those in favor? Well, any, you know, we've got a motion in a second. Any comment? Okay, with no comment, Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, it's unanimous?
I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant reports of town officers and committees.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comment? Hearing no comment, take a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, it's unanimous.
I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant elected official salaries.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any comment? Hearing no comment, take a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, it's unanimous.
I have a question on four before I call a motion. Joe, procedurally, can we call a motion with a amount to be determined or should we wait until we get an amount, I think?
I would ask on this one that the board hold off until next week, till we finalize that.
Okay. They will hold off on, I'm sorry, Ed?
I understand that it's not only, on this article, we'll not only be able, need to identify an amount, but what that amount funds?
Correct.
So, we'll have to?
Yeah, there'd be a resultant table that would identify that, correct.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to go to article. All right. I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant the Cape Cod Regional Technical School District budget in the amount of $1,737,789.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comment? Hearing no comment. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, it's unanimous on the article seven.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I know it doesn't pertain to the next one, but I do want to draw the board's attention that if we proceed as you can see here, or as listed here, I should say, the bottom of the spreadsheet, you'll notice the free cash amount that's available that has been certified of $1,446,115. The present roster exceeds that amount by the $31,000 you see there. So, I think we just need to tread lightly and the difference, if I could identify it, will come into play under article 12, which is facility maintenance and repair. So, other than that, I think the board could continue on as your comfort level allows.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant the Water Department budget in the amount of $4,291,075.
Do I have a second? Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any comment? We'll go to a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous.
Question on the next article before I read it. There's an amount of $272,932 here. Previous discussion has alluded to that they may not need that. And I guess the question I would have, should we, should we hold off on that pending a conversation because we're not going to have as much budget needs in that due to the lack of homes being hooked up and going to chatter?
I think that's a fair point.
Do we have an idea when we might know what the new estimate of needs going to be?
I'll reach out to Dan first thing in the morning because we need to have it circled back by Thursday, Friday of this week anyway.
Okay.
That would be a way to save some money from the current deficit if we could knock that back.
Given that the expenditures in available free cash is running in the negative, it would be a way to cover that.
The $31,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might be the target number.
Yep.
All right. With that, I'm going to move.
I would ask that you not take action on the capital outlay plan yet. I know the Finance Committee has, but I'm still trying to put it all together.
Good, I'd like to ask a question on this. Joe, has the Finance Committee contacted you as we discussed in the subcommittee meeting relative to their version of the capital plan? And are you comfortable with, you know, that you have the right, you have the right numbers from them?
Yeah, I think we're there. I just want to be able to, you know, this effort took me right up until meeting time tonight to get everything together. I just, I've been able to analyze as much as I could with this spreadsheet. I'd just like the opportunity to pull it all together one last time.
Okay.
Jamie, is that, am I showing that?
Yeah.
Joe, or through your chair?
A little technical glitch for one moment here.
It's off.
Let me check here. Apparently Don.
Let me see.
Trouble signing in, he's starting to get to you a question.
Don, oh, yeah.
Oh, Roseanne Shapiro.
Yep, so I can.
Oh, I didn't.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Yeah, I made themselves an organizer. So, there's an individual that is sharing their screen and we need them to stop doing that and I don't want to drop them from the call, but there's a Roseanne Shapiro that's on.
Oh, if you have to, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to have you call back in, please.
Article 11, Joe? Are we still waiting?
Sorry about that, Mike. Sorry about that, board members.
Okay with Article 11?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Sorry for the delay.
No problem. I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant capital items funded from free cash, items under $50,000. The amount on that is 42, the amount of that is for police TASER replacement, year three of three, $14,00910, fire, air pack, capital contribution, $27,389, for a total of $42,299.
Do I have a second on that?
So, the question, does this still include our share of the much larger expenditure on the?
Air packs?
I will read the explanation if you want. So, the explanation, the total cost of air packs is $575,16518. The amount is offset by a grant that the town earned in the amount of $547,77636. The town must demonstrate funding for training as well as amount funded by the town through our capital plan in order to meet the grant requirements. The training amount, $7,388.82, is covered in the fire department's operating budget and the article above covers the capital expenditure.
I think that is the wording that you wanted, Ed, that we were discussing last week. I thought it was, anyway.
Because the purchase, the item is an item in excess of $50,000, what I had asked for is it to be separated out as?
Oh, okay, I thought you just.
But because I, you know, a capital item with a value of less than $50,000 that we're purchasing and, you know, the funding source becomes irrelevant, it's the cost of the item.
Joe, did you understand what Ed is saying is that the actual overall cost of the air packs is in excess of $500,000. So, the actual cost is not, item's up to $50,000, but certainly exceeds that and it should be a separate.
So, I can, I can certainly do that. There was also discussion about whether it should even be titled items under $50,000 because of the charter change. And I know that if you look at the recommendation from the Finance Committee on the adopt the plan, they've made the statement that the Finance Committee has, Finance Committee has incorporated the new rules and into the plan and voted to move that plan forward. So, they've done that one, but they didn't do this one, to be honest. So... So I can do whatever the board wants, as far as that article goes. But if we're, if we're operating under the new charter requirement, there no longer is that concept of items under fifty K.
Yeah.
Michael?
I, you know, my, last week's comment remains for me, that this is how this was done last year, the same. I think it was the same article, because it was year two of three. At least for the TASER replacement, I don't know air packs. But given the time, and given the time it would take the town administrator to change this, I think we should proceed as it's in the warrant now, in the matter of time. And I do hear Ed's point, but I think the explanation clearly states what we're doing, and that the bulk of this is paid for by grant. So our purchase, in my mind, is still forty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
I would just add that your statement is spot on, insofar as this article was carried over from past year in the same format, so I didn't choose to segregate it this way, it's how the, the original warrant was built.
Yeah. Items like this, it's a recurring objection.
Understood, understood. I'm more befuddled by the charter change.
Yeah. So in order to get, be able to vote on this, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Ed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Michael?
I'm an aye.
I'm an aye.
Two zero one?
Passes.
If I may, on Article, do we wanna deal with this?
No, Ed, can you speak up a little more?
I'm sorry.
Article twelve, Joe, did you wanna hold on this because of the thirty-one thousand? Or could my motion be to take that thirty-one thousand out of what would be Article nine? And see where it shakes out?
So to answer the question, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to hold off, but I also wouldn't want you to take that action. What I wanted to do under this one is explain where I'm coming on this, because facilities maintenance would have had this item and the subsidy for this cultural center. And so I was gonna talk about that, and I don't know if that confuses the issue. If the board would rather hold off until next Monday, I would have no objection.
I mean, if we can get it done, I don't mind having a conversation.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as you'll see in the draft explanation, the, this was a discussion that I mentioned last week, where Finance Director had conversations with the DPW Director and Facilities Maintenance Manager, as I did as well. And what we came back with is they're, they're willing to defer the two roof projects for both Brooks Library and Five Bell's Neck. So those were originally planned in there, we're gonna defer those. And then the other part of it is, is the subsidy, as you all know, relative to the cultural center. Being mindful of the discussions that the board was having earlier about revolving funds, the revolving fund as of July thirty-first for cultural center is roughly three hundred thousand dollars. So I'd be looking to do a dollar amount, close to the hundred thousand subsidy, to at least get us something for the bulk of this fiscal year. And that would not require an article, that just is the execution of the revolving fund. And so that's really what's in play with this particular article. It's two deferments that the DPW Director is okay with, and just trying to figure out the subsidy mechanism for the cultural center. And so the fifty-five thousand from capital, excuse me, from free cash, is needed for this particular item. It is not reflected in the Finance Committee vote, that's why you'll see the difference in their column versus my column.
Michael?
Can we, can we put an amount in of less than a hundred thousand? Prior discussions that we've had related to the cultural center and the subsidy was originally, originally it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand. That number's come down since we started renting it. And it was two, two town meetings ago, maybe three, when town meeting gave us five years to try and make that building work. We had said we were gonna reduce that amount as, as we built up money from the rentals. So is it, is it, I guess, whose position is it that we need it to be a hundred thousand? Can we drop that?
So the hundred thousand was a carryover from the previous administrator's capital plan? And then the question really became, how do we wanna fund it? It was originally a hundred thousand through free cash.
And has there been any conversation, if I may?
Please.
Has there been any conversation with Carolyn and Sean, and anyone else in this, as to whether or not we need the hundred thousand anymore?
So I did have conversations, I know Sean had a conversation with Carolyn before Sean and I met with Link. I know, going from memory, that Sean will tell you that, and I don't disagree. I use the phrase, keep the lights on, he said the bare minimum. So his bare minimum gets to utilities and some minor standard repairs throughout the fiscal year, and that's anywhere from ninety to one fifteen. And so that's why I stayed on the one hundred thousand.
Okay.
That does not factor in costs related to personnel, which would come through the revolving fund, and other items. It is utilities and minor repairs.
Okay, so it would be wise to keep this hundred in there for now?
When you say keep the hundred in there.
Keep the hundred subsidy for the cultural center, the top piece, not to modify that number now?
Not to modify the number, correct, and really to settle on a funding source. And so like I said, right now, I'm leaning towards the funding source of the revolving fund, because there is a balance that allows for it. I know there's been a lot of discussion about revolving funds, and more, this is one of those many other items that I chalk up to. On Monday, September twenty-eighth, we're gonna get right into fiscal year twenty-two. So I'm hopeful that that would work.
Ed, you have a comment?
Yeah. We're talking about Article twelve?
Correct.
Yes.
And you keep on talking about a hundred thousand, all I see is fifty-five thousand.
That's all that the article has right now for repair fund.
So where's the hundred thousand come from?
So the hundred thousand is referenced in the explanation.
Yes.
The dollar amount's not there yet, because I didn't settle on the dollar amount yet, nor did I know the balance of the revolving fund at the time of print. So if you're looking at the explanation, the explanation might say going forward, the cultural center subsidy of one hundred thousand dollars will be funded via their revolving fund, which had a balance of, Carol had told me this evening, I believe it was just over three hundred thousand as of July thirty-first.
Okay, so the hundred thousand isn't going to be approved in this article?
It was originally planned to be, correct, it's, would be removed.
But it's been taken out.
Okay.
Okay, that's, but going back to what is in the article, what's, what were the costs of the roof repairs?
I believe the roof repairs, I think Brooks Library was one forty-eight, and I wanna say that Bell's Neck was, I'm going off of memory, I wanna say over thirty at least.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
You know. Letting roofs continue to leak is just, you know, is really bad economy. But I understand the position we're in, but I think that needs to be, need to make a commitment that it's the top of the list next year, because.
Especially in a library.
Yeah. You know, we, we had a leak in the library at our new high school, and it, the insurance, I think, settlement was a little over a million, two hundred thousand, with all the damage that was done, so.
I'll set.
Yeah.
Okay, move that we accept and adopt Facility Maintenance and Repair Fund.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, take a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous.
Set.
Yep.
I move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant, replace fire department ambulance.
Second.
In the amount of estimated cost of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Got a motion and a second, any further comment? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous.
The board had already voted on Items fourteen through, Articles fourteen through twenty-one. The, so I don't, I know how I missed it, because I had so many versions, but you'll see Article seventeen makes reference to a debt exclusion. That's obviously old language, so I'm asking counsel to help guide me on, I think it's going to be as simple as identifying the, in the article, that the road maintenance program is gonna be funded through free cash. So that, that, the board is, the board and the Finance Committee have already approved those, but the language will change to reflect the fact that we're not seeking debt exclusion override or debt for these purchases.
Okay. So what's our next?
So the, the next one, I'm assuming that the board is not gonna take action yet on twenty-two and twenty-four. Those are the pending zoning bylaws. You obviously endorsed the West Harwich Special District, given how that process started through the board. Are you inclined to take action on those items?
We don't have them listed in the agenda tonight, anyway, so I don't think we can.
That settles that, thank you, sorry, Mr. Chairman. The next item is that new article that I mentioned, Article twenty-five, which appears on. Thirty-one.
Stand by. Just, if I can.
Please.
The zoning articles, those public hearings, will we have that information by next week, so that we can vote on that?
I don't believe so, not on both of them.
So we really need to vote them, and then. Would Finance Committee vote those?
So another procedural question that I'm led to ask, I know Finance Committee has that ability to do no recommendation pending further information. Does the board do those kind of recommendations as well, or?
We haven't since I've been here, but Ed would probably know better.
Yeah, we've, in the past, not had any recommendation or opinion on certain items. Either because we didn't have enough information, or there was, it was not really an article that rose to the need for an opinion.
Do we want to utilize that consensus of the board on this, or on these, these articles?
These are the zoning?
Yeah, the zoning bylaw amendments.
Joe, will that, sorry.
Sorry, Michael.
Joe, will that give you enough, if we do that, can we then just assume that it's gonna be in the warrant?
Yes.
Chairman?
That we, that we vote those? So what article numbers are those?
They are twenty.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two and twenty-four.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
You already took action on twenty-three, but the chairman is correct, though, there was no notice given on those.
Twenty-two and twenty-four. As I said, they are not on the agenda for this evening, so I'm not sure.
Oh, you're right, let's vote them next week, sorry.
We have the ability to do that.
Yeah.
You know, I guess, the multifamily bylaw, the one question I have, and I still haven't quite gotten, understand what they're doing to it, but it appears that in some, what's being proposed, in some zones would require minimum square feet for certain multifamily units, you know, studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, but in certain zones. But in other zones, there's no requirement for minimum square footage. And, and, you know, it's, it seems if you're, you're going to require minimum square footage, there's some theoretical reason why you're doing it. I, on the other hand, feel that, you know, we ought, you ought to allow whoever's building this thing to define, build something that he thinks is going to be habitable and sell, and provide the market need that, for affordable housing that we are, and putting in these odd constraints of minimum square footage may be run counter to that. So we may be basically shooting ourselves in the foot.
Well, I guess we have between now and next week to address this, so we'll, we'll take those up. Michael, if you, if you're willing to continue?
Yep, and a move that we accept, adopt, and include in the warrant, adopt MGL Chapter thirty-three and fifty-nine, pay for police officers in service in reserves, National Guard.
Second.
And that would, that's Chapter fifty-three, Section fifty-nine.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. Article thirty-eight?
So thirty, Article thirty pertained to the revolving funds.
Article thirty-seven would be the next open item.
Again, it's not, it's not on the.
Now it's not on the warrant, Joe.
Again, it's not on the agenda.
Correct, yeah, I, the Finance Committee took action on Article thirty-eight and recommended, and, thirty-eight, and took no action or needs additional information. And really, I'm stuck on this one, to be quite honest, because I know there was discussion before by other board members as it relates to revolving funds and what we wanna do for setting the limits, if anything. I'm familiar with forty-four, fifty-three and a half, and know that if the board were not to authorize spending, then over time, those would revert back to the town, to the general fund, I believe. But this was more to get a discussion item for the board, and perhaps for next Monday night.
Okay, I do know that Selectman Howell has concerns relative to this, and I would imagine he would like to participate in the discussion.
That's what I was gonna recommend, we bring this back next week when Don's here, because this was one that he's specifically interested in.
Yes.
Which one?
It's number fifteen on your, under C, Article thirty-eight, Amendment to the Code of the Town of Howard's General Bylaws, Chapter eight, Departmental Revolving Funds. And the, the Finance Committee has waited for further information, so no action. So we should delay that until Monday.
And Mr. Chairman, that draws a conclusion to my items this evening. You'll see that the next three that have no recommendations yet from the board are the petitioned articles. I know that Danielle received information from at least one of the petitioners to provide you with notes that were sent to us this afternoon, so you should have those in front of you. And Mr. Chairman, as you've indicated, there are at least two different petitioners ready to speak to their articles.
Okay, so the first would be Article forty-three, excuse me?
I'm, I'm having trouble with the numbers.
Well, I'm going on what we have for our agenda tonight, so that's, you know, because it's my understanding that that's what we can discuss.
No, I, I know, but I'm, you know, trying to find the different things, and there seems to be.
I'm probably confusing it by saying seventeen, but it's seventeen on the, on the old business. It's actually Article forty-three, Commercial Single-Use Plastic Water Bottle Ban.
Okay.
And under that, we do have two individuals from the general public that would like to comment. Joe, I don't know whether you wanted to say anything first, or?
Well, just that I, there's a scrivener's error in the agenda, those numbers are incorrect. Ed's right, seventeen should be forty-two, eighteen should be forty-three, and nineteen should be forty-four. Other than that, I nailed it.
But realistically, it's, it's, you can still go by, because we're really not using article numbers.
Right, you can use those agenda item numbers, correct.
Use the agenda item.
Yep.
I was just trying to find the right place in the material.
So I'm thoroughly confusing you, I can tell.
Procedurally on these, if I may?
Yes, please.
We, we, I noticed Finance Committee IP'd these, indefinitely postponed. So we don't have to, these are in the one. These are in the warrant anyway, Joe, correct?
Correct.
So we're going to hear from the petitioners tonight, or some, but we don't have to take an action on this.
Correct.
Right.
They're going in it.
Right. So why don't we go ahead, Jamie, with the individuals? Let's start with Patrick Otten and his comments on the, the single-use plastic water bottle ban.
I believe he called in, so he wanted directly to hit star six on his phone, unmute himself.
Okay. Patrick, if you could hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself, and we can welcome you into the meeting.
Hello, this is Patrick Otten.
Hello, Patrick.
Hear me clearly?
We can hear you, yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Town Administrator, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with respect to the proposed commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban. Okay? So, you know, let me begin just by asking a couple of questions. You know, why do you live on Cape Cod? You know, why not Gary, Indiana, Pittsburgh, Louisiana, Texas, downwind from an oil refinery or next door to an oil well? You live on Cape Cod because of the environment, our oceans, our beaches, our woodlands. That's why you're here. So what is it about plastic? There are many positive uses and applications for plastic, but what about single-use plastics? You use it for 30 seconds, but it persists for over 1,000 years afterwards. We did not ask for plastic bottles. There was no legislation or bylaw requiring them. No, it's a corporate Pepsi, Coke, Nestle, et cetera, idea for making money. The water in the bottle is when, is 10,000 times more expensive than the water out of your tap. We also know the purity of our tap water. You don't have a clue of what's in bottled water. There are 50 billion bottles worldwide every year, 30 billion in the U.S. That's 1,000 per second of plastic water bottles. For disposal costs, pre-COVID and the single stream that we're now experiencing for disposal, to dispose of plastic, the cost that the town, $200 per ton and $85 profit for recycling aluminum and $35 profit for recycling paper. And that's from Link Hooper, DPW Administrator, okay? Today, there's more plastic in our environment. Every square inch of the earth has plastic. The oceans are filled with plastic. All life is impacted by plastic. It's estimated we breathe and ingest a credit card amount of plastic every week. All right? So why use plastic bottles? 40 years ago, did mom buy cases of bottled water? No. You grew up just fine and healthy, alive without plastic bottles. So what's the alternative? Using your own personal reusable refillable water bottle at home that you clean and that you take care of and you fill yourself. So one of the concerns are costs, but there's multiple ways to assess costs. One of the questions that came up from the Finance Committee was, what's the cost for retailers? Another question is, what's the cost to our personal health? What is the cost to our environment? What's the cost to switch from plastic to personal containers, cans, or paper? Right? We know that the economic cost of plastic pollution for tourism, pistoress, and shipping is $8 billion a year. Okay? Across the globe, India, Thailand, China, EU, this country, or this state, our neighbors, are saying no to plastic. Last year, 11 towns out of 15 passed municipal ban on plastic containers. This year, 11 towns will have the commercial proposal on their town warrant. The other four will have the municipal ban under town warrants, okay? So the plastic bottle ban, commercial plastic bottle ban, is a follow-on, carry-on from last year's movement of a municipal ban. So think of Cape Cod, the environment, our health, your health, and let's make our woodlands, our oceans, our roadside, our parking lot, pass plastic-free. We can make Cape a desirable destination resource. I'm going to ask for your support for the commercial ban of unflavored, non-carbonated plain water in plastic bottles, less than one gallon. So I know change is difficult, but I think this is one we need to make now. So I appreciate your time and would be open to your questions and comments. Well, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have none.
Okay.
Well, you know, last year I supported the ban on sale of beverages and things in activities on town property. And unfortunately, we weren't, it was to be implemented this year, and the impact of it most, mostly was going to be on craft fairs, events like that. And we had developed a, I thought would have been a reasonable solution to get away from using plastic bottles, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to put that into effect to see how it works. You know, I think, given the scientist, scientific data, moving away from the use of plastics is something we need to do. But, so personally, I'll be supporting this action on town meeting, but I don't know if that's something the board wants to take a, a position on.
Patrick, thanks so much for your advocacy and all the hard work you put into this and the, and the notes that you have sent along to help educate us. It's very helpful. I know we have one more individual who would like to speak on this, this evening, Bonnie Bridges. So Bonnie, if you could do star six...
Do star six.
To unmute yourself.
Yes, I, I've done that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Bonnie. Please, please proceed.
Please, please proceed.
Okay. At the present time, there is nearly unanimous agreement that climate change is a reality, and there's much talk of urgency for climate action. The commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban provides an opportunity to take action in a way that will not only affect greenhouse gas emissions, but it will also raise awareness of the inconsistency between our daily habits and our desire to lower carbon footprint. Recent studies have overwhelmingly proven that gas, greenhouse gases are released during plastic production, and more recently, they, they continue to be released while in use and as they degrade. Plastics have a significant greenhouse gas footprint and estimates that the plastic industry will continue, will contribute 20% of the overall global greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 if we do not take action. Specifically to daily life, plastic is a significant threat to our Cape environment. It's in the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the food we eat. Why would we not take a stand on this issue? As a community, we have a responsibility to protect our environment, and as a community within a nation, we have a responsibility to protect the broader environment as well. The commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban not only increases awareness and facilitates action in Harwich, but it provides visibility on the issue of national and global concern. All change begins locally with civil engagement. The actions being sought in Harwich are also being addressed in all other Cape towns, as Patrick said. Collective action as a United Barnstable County on the issue of the environment will be significant for the changes that need to be made. Here are a few of other reasons why taking a stand on plastic is needed. Plastic is a human health issue. It is linked to premature, premature death, fertility issues, ADHD, endocrine disruption, autoimmune disease, and cardiovascular disease. Plastic is harming our environment. Animal life is dying from the ingestion of plastic. We've all seen pictures of the whales and marine life. Plastic is an expense. There are alternatives, as canned water that provide revenue where plastic is, is cost to dispose of. On a ton-based basis, aluminum will generate $85 and $200 for disposal of plastic, both of which Patrick mentioned. There is no valid reason for not embracing the commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban. The costs of plastic in monetary and non-monetary terms significantly outweigh the benefits. The commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban is the right action to take and needs to be taken now. We look forward to your support. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Bonnie. We appreciate your comments.
Appreciate your comments.
I'm going to ask the board here, do we want to take a vote on a sense here? I have a motion.
I have a motion.
May, may I interject for a moment?
Yes, is that Patrick again?
Is this Patrick again?
Yes, this is Patrick.
Bonnie needs to mute herself.
Bonnie, you need to mute yourself? Go ahead, Patrick.
I just wanted to say that all the other boards from the other 11 towns, except for Thelma, have, have voted in favor of this commercial plastic bottle ban.
Well, we're at the unfortunate disadvantage of not having all of our members here tonight.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, since we, I don't have a motion, I, I will indicate my own feelings relative to this, which is I strongly support it, and I appreciate the work and the comments that you all have made. You know, so we have a sense of two of the Selectmen here tonight, and whether we eventually take a vote on this, we will bring that up with our colleagues when they return to the meeting next week. Okay? Okay, let's move along here to 44. Is that correct? Michael?
Yep. Rescind the action taken at Annual Town Meeting, May 6, for Article 50. Not sure.
Joe, can you give more color to this?
Just that it's a petitioned article that's seeking to rescind what is now a general bylaw. This article passed last year at town meeting, excuse me, Article 50 passed at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, I think by a vote of 235 to 134. So it was adopted, it was heavily debated, and the petitioners are looking to rescind that action.
And the, I believe the article was on the plastic, it was the plastic bottle ban.
Yeah. Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, the title on that was, was Containers.
Yeah.
Specifically.
I believe we have one individual who would like to speak on this, Jamie, if I'm correct?
I don't see her on the call unless she's called for.
Okay. Well, if Janelle Brown is on the line, please star six so you can speak to this issue. Okay. I guess we...
There they go. They're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Is that Janelle?
Hi, how are you? It's Janelle.
Good. Please, please proceed.
Okay. So I wrote this article before I knew that the prior article was written at all. And if you read the verbiage that I presented, I decided that I would write this petition article because of the discriminatory language that was passed by last town meeting, in that it, the article that was passed only subjected the township, town property, and then entities that used the town property to the banning of the single-use containers. And being involved with many nonprofits, Little League, and football, a lot of sports, craft fairs, as Ed had mentioned, I noticed that there was a financial burden being put on these small organizations that were really, you know, just trying to provide a drink for our kids who are playing sports or for craft fairgoers or what have you. And, you know, aluminum cans of water and cardboard boxes of water are significantly more money to purchase in the first place. And the other part of it was, many people probably would not necessarily purchase the water anymore, they would just bring their own. So the financial burdens would be felt by these nonprofits and by the craft fairs and whatnot. And I just felt like also at the rec center, for instance, in the after-school program, no longer could they use the vending machines. So I know my son, who, you know, spends a whole long day at school and drinks the water that I give him in his water bottle, and then goes over to the rec center for after-school sports, then all of a sudden doesn't have access to Gatorade anymore, for instance, where he wants a little bit of sugar to, you know, give him a little bit of energy or other things that are in plastic bottles beyond water, because it wasn't just water for this past Article Number 50 last year. So I thought, you know, the verbiage wasn't correct in, in just wanting to reduce the use of plastic or ban the use of plastic. And so I wrote this petition article for this year, not knowing that Article 43 was in existence. So regardless of the fact that Article 43 is in existence, if that passes, I still think we need to rescind this Article 50 from last year, because the new article, should it pass, will kind of be the umbrella, and we don't need this anymore. But to only have something that affects the township, I just think it's wrong. And also the fact that, like, for instance, DPW workers this summer, they can't go out and buy a case of water and then, you know, go out on the road. It's not like we have water fountains anymore. Like, when I was a kid, there were water fountains everywhere and on all the parks and playing fields. White House Field had one, Brooks Park had two or three. They don't, we don't have water fountains anymore. So, yeah, I guess that's really it. I think I've said enough.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Do we want to take any action on this?
I, I don't think so. You know, we didn't, as I indicated, we didn't have any of the Cranberry Festival activities this year, but last year, as one of the community organizations, we did implement this and to provide folks with water. We got a several, a couple of large 10-gallon thermoses and would put a couple bags of ice in and fill it with water and have a stack of paper cups next to it. And I think the public attending our festivals were quite pleased that they were able to get a drink of water without having to pay $2 for a 33-cent bottle of water. You know, it, it did represent a loss of revenue for, you know, because we would, used to sell the water, but I think in terms of customer appreciation, we probably made up for it.
Well, I guess we won't take any action.
Yeah, that does make sense for cranberry harvest, yep.
Thank you, Janelle. We won't take any action this evening, and we'll move ahead with the next one, Michael.
All right. Next one would be Article 45, New Climate Policy, which I believe last week we heard it was going to change to a resolution.
We did hear that. That's correct. Was there any word? Yeah. Was there any word on that, Joe?
I do know that Danielle had reached out. I, I don't know if the individual's on the phone now, but someone indicated they were going to call in.
No, we don't have anyone on the phone for that, so I don't believe we'll take any action on this, this evening, so.
Mr. Chairman?
My name is Mickey Kearns, and I'm here.
Okay. Jamie?
Your name again was, please?
Uh, Mickey Kearns.
Okay, please, uh, please go ahead, Nikki. I apologize for not having your name and calling it.
Well, that's okay. Uh, I, I want to thank you for inviting me to speak about the climate action petition. Uh, with me tonight, um, we also have, from, from the Harwich Climate Action Network, we have, um, Roseanne Shapiro and Deborah Ennis, and, uh, we would like to ask you for a postponement. Uh, we were hoping to talk about this, because we are trying to change the wording from a bylaw to a resolution, and, uh, John Chori's going to help me with it, and so we are hoping that we could have some time to talk about the, the petition this week and then present, uh, next Monday night at your meeting.
Okay. Joe, would that work, uh, for them to be able to do that?
Sure. Um, it obviously changes the effect of what they were looking to do, that would have to be indefinitely postponed at town meeting.
Right.
And a resolution has no effect, if you will, it's, uh, sentiment of the town meeting.
Right.
So whether the board wanted to hear that discussion next week is...
Do we have a sense here?
Sure.
Yeah? Michael, you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we're fine with that. We're fine with that, uh, coming back next week, um, uh, as you change it to a resolution.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, okay, that's, that's the ones that we were going to address this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just before you conclude that...
Surely.
Um, I did also want to follow up. We talked last week about, um, consent agenda and consent calendar. Um, John Giorgio has offered to create a, a motion, uh, that can be made from the floor at town meeting to try and encapsulate those, rather than us go through the effort of assuming. He'll have that motion ready.
Okay.
So between that and the reduced quorum, we should be able to have an expeditious meeting.
That sounds good. That sounds good. Um, moving along to contracts, uh, discussion and possible vote to approve Phase Two, Contract One, Change Order Number Two for Robert B. Hour Company, Inc., in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to be signed by the, uh, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Griffin Ryder is on the call. Uh, you can see his memos in the packet, which, um, I agree with, but if the board has any questions about the change orders, he's prepared to speak to them.
Okay, Michael?
I move that we approve, uh, Phase Two, Contract One, Change Order Number Two for Robert B. Hour Company, Inc., in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to be signed by the Board of Selectmen Chairman.
I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, do we have any discussion?
No, just wanted to point out to the public that this does fit into the five percent contingency, so this is a, a normal change order.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Uh, we have a, uh, motion and a second. Uh, we'll move to a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It's unanimous.
Steven, I'm just going to read the next one.
Sure, that'd be great.
I'm going to move to approve Phase Two, Contract Two, Change Order Number One for RJV Construction Corporation, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be signed by the Board of Selectmen Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, do we have any comment? Michael?
Just one ask, um, and, and not, um, next week, because clearly we have to get the warrant done, but I would like to get a, uh, update on the East Harwich Sewer Project, where both companies stand, what's left to be done for work, what's left, uh, in the contingency funds, uh, when we can expect to be done, hookups, as much as we, much information, Joe, as we can get from Dan and Griffin and yourself for the residents of East Harwich as to when that's going to button up, um, including what neighborhoods aren't going to be finished because they weren't part of. I know there's two neighborhoods that are quite confused, because some of the roads in the neighborhood were done and the other ones weren't, so if we could get an overall, after we finish the warrant process, that would be great.
Sure. Cool. Okay, thank you, Michael. Uh, we, we have a, uh, motion and a second to take a vote. Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Griffin, for the work on that.
Thanks, Griffin. Uh, we move on to the Town Administrator's report. Joe?
Uh, so two items, um, very quickly, Mr. Chairman. First one is sending around for your signatures. Uh, as you may recall, there was a change in managers, um, for Five Fifty-four Street Bar LLC, doing business as Three Monkeys. That's been approved by the ABCC, so it needs the board's signatures. And, Ed, am I taking these back?
Yeah, yeah, those are signed.
And then, uh, the other item actually, um, and it ties into, um, the topic, somewhat to the topic that Selectman McCaskill had just mentioned. So we know that next week is August thirty-first. What we may not be mindful of, because I know I keep missing it, is Labor Day is, uh, September seventh, so I did want to get a sense of the board as to what, um, your plans would be for that week for a meeting. Um, mindful that I've asked you to take some time to spend with my daughters before they, um, travel off to the classroom.
Okay.
So something to think about for perhaps next week, but just wanted to put it out there that, amazingly, one way or the other, September's right around the corner.
It certainly is.
Uh, that concludes my report.
Great. Selectman's report? Michael?
I have nothing.
Ed?
I don't have anything either.
Well, thanks very much. Neither do I. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Have a second.